Ready to unmute you guys.
Okay.
The regular meeting of the Saint Joseph County Council, March ninth, two thousand twenty-one is now called to order. Next, we will take the roll. Mr. Krasinski? Mr. Krasinski? Mr. Nolan?
Here.
Mr. File?
Here.
Ms. Hess?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Ms. Hess?
Here.
Mr. Tulloyan?
Here.
Mr. Katanzright?
Here.
Mr. Kanericki?
Here.
Mr. Root?
Here.
Mr. Morton is present. Thank you very much. Next, we'll have the pleasure of allegiance.
Aye.
Aye, pleasure allegiance.
Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next, I'm gonna read the statement in reference to the Indiana Public Access Councilor. The Indiana Public Access Council has provided guidance on holding such virtual slash partially virtual meetings during the effective periods of the governor's emergency declarations allowing such meetings. Specifically, the public must be able to see and hear the members of the governing body during the meeting, and the public must be able to provide their input, input to the governing body in some fashion if public comment and participation is part of the meeting. Due to some issues with usage of video by persons viewing meetings, the county has determined that it is appropriate to require during virtual and partially virtual meetings that members of the public viewing such meetings keep their microphones and cameras turned off. The host of the meeting at the county members of the public's, the host of the meeting at the county members of the public's microphones and cameras to off. During, during portions of a meeting where public participation is allowed or required, i.e., during a public hearing or privilege of the floor, if such is offered, the participating member of the public will have their microphone and camera, if any, turned on. If a member of the public wishes to participate in this portion of the meeting, they should indicate this by using the raise hand function in Zoom and/or by messaging the host in the chat function. Public participation instructions. If you would like to address the council during times of public comment and are using the Zoom application, open participants and then click the button at the bottom of that window that says raise hand. If you are dialing in only on the phone, press nine, star nine. This will alert the moderator that you would like to address the council. When it is your turn, the moderator will call on you and allow you to unmute. At this time, you will be able to press the unmute microphone button on Zoom or hit star six on your phone to unmute. At any time during the meeting, you can send a chat to the moderator to ask a question regarding clarification on this policy. The moderator cannot answer questions regarding discussion topics of the meeting. Um, next, um, I'll call on commis- Councilwoman Hess for a reappointment.
Uh, Mr. President, I move that we reappoint Dennis Heckman to the Lakeville Economic Development Commission, Jean Reese to the Walkerton Economic Development Commission, and Sarah Williams to the North Liberty Economic Development Commission.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, nominations are now closed. Do I hear a second?
I guess it's some heat which feels better.
I'm muted. I'm not, I'm not muted. It's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Dennis Heckman is reappointed to the Lakeville Economic Development Commission. Jean Reese is reappointed to the Walkerton Economic Development Commission, and Sarah Williams is reappointed to the North Liberty Economic Development Commission. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the February ninth, two thousand twenty-one public hearing?
Don't move.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the February ninth, two thousand twenty-one public hearing are approved. Next, we have first readings. Clerk, will you please read bill number twenty-five twenty-one?
Yes, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Yes.
In ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of Sancho County, public way or public place located at the first north-south alley west of Brink Avenue, bound by Elsie Avenue to the north, Beatrice Street to the south, lots one ninety-five to two oh eight of Lexington Park to the west, and lots one twenty-five to one thirty-eight of Lexington Park to the east Penn Township, Sancho County, section four, T three seven, N R four three. Petitioner Brian Ramp, three-six-five North Halsted, unit twenty-three-ten Chicago, Illinois, six oh six-six one.
Bill number twenty-five twenty-one is assigned to the land use planning committee?
Bill twenty-six twenty-one, in ordinance of the Sancho County Council amending chapter ninety-seven, fair housing of the Sancho County Code, petitioner Diana Hess.
Bill number twenty-six twenty-one is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee?
Bill twenty-seven twenty-one, in ordinance of the Sancho County Council, twenty-two-one salary ordinance for employees for community corrections, Duke Home Center of the county, providing a COVID-nineteen hazard pay stipend to qualifying county employees, petition to Duke Home Center.
Bill number twenty-seven twenty-one is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee?
Bill twenty-eight twenty-one, in ordinance amending a supplementing Title fifteen land uses, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for property located at five-four-five-six-five Sage Road from C Commercial District to A Agricultural District, petitioner Airplane Commission.
Bill number twenty-eight twenty-one is assigned to the land use planning committee?
Bill twenty-nine twenty-one, in ordinance amending a supplementing Title fifteen land uses, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for property located at one-two-four-nine-one Beckley Street, Granger, from our single-family district to OB Office Buffer District, petitioner Connie Pauling.
Bill number twenty-nine twenty-one is assigned to the land use planning committee?
Bill thirty-two one, in ordinance amending a supplementing Title fifteen land uses, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for unaddressed property located at the south side of Cleveland Road approximately point three mi- uh, yeah, point three miles west of Olive Road, containing fifty-point-five-two acres, more or less, from our single-family district to I Industrial District, petitioner James H. and Barbara K. Kidder.
Bill number thirty twenty-one is assigned to the land use planning committee?
Bill thirty-one twenty-one, in ordinance of the Sancho County Council authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding the county economic development income tax revenue bonds of two thousand fourteen and incidental expenses in connection therewith and on account of the bonds and addressing other matters connected therewith, petitioner Phil Senda.
Bill number thirty-one twenty-one is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee?
Bill thirty-two twenty-one, in ordinance of the Sancho County Council appropriating the proceeds of the Sancho County local income tax revenue refunding bonds, petitioner Phil Senda.
Bill number thirty-two twenty-one is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee? That completes first readings for this evening. Next, we have resolution bill number thirty-four twenty-one. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
Alrighty, a resolution, resolution of the Sancho County Council supporting passage of Senate Bill one sixty-four. A bill being considered by the Indiana General Assembly, increasing the current Sancho County innkeeper's tax from six percent to eight percent, dispelling out how those funds should be allocated to help develop product, enhance tourism, stimulate economic growth, and create jobs in Sancho County. Would you like me to where, read the where asses?
No, that, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hammond. There again, um, this is a supporting resolution from the Saint Joe County Council, uh, supporting the passage of Senate Bill number one sixty for, uh, the innkeeper's tax.
Motion for passage?
Uh, we have to have a public hearing.
Okay.
Um, any questions from any council member? Hearing now, hearing none, we'll open a public hearing on bill number thirty-four twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of this bill?
We, we have some hands raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
They wanted to speak in favor, I believe.
I am so sorry.
It's okay. You can't speak.
Rob DeKleen and Jeff Ray?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Ray, uh, president, CEO, Southland Regional Chamber, with offices at one oh one North Michigan Street in South Bend. Uh, just take a quick second of your time, uh, encourage you to pass this resolution. We've been working to build a broad coalition of community support. We have been, uh, doing similar resolutions with the Mishawaka Council, uh, the South Bend Council. Both of them have approved this unanimously. We've worked with tailors, with, uh, uh, the commissioners, really everybody, a lot of people in the community, working to try to stimulate economic activity coming post-pandemic. We have a, a number of improvements planned, um, related to increasing funding for this, including Mishawaka Sports Complex, the Morris Performing Arts Center, the Potawatomi Zoo, and most importantly, the Tourism Capital Improvement Fund that gets established as part of this. We're excited about what that means to help driving, uh, tourism in our area. I'll let Rob speak more, uh, to the specifics of that. Just wanted you to know, though, that the business community is, is supportive of this, excited about it, and asking you to consider this. We have a hearing on Thursday of this week in front of the House Ways and Means Committee, and we'd like to continue to show broad community support, uh, for this ordinance, and it would help us to also be able to say that the county council is in support. We recognize that you have to take final action later. This is enabling legislation that you would have to act on at a later date. We think this doesn't obligate you to anything. It simply, um, uh, helps the General Assembly know that there's broad support here in our community.
Thank you.
Rob is available.
Mr. DeKleen?
Yes, yes, good evening, uh, council members and, and President Morton. Rob DeKleen with, uh, the Chamber of Commerce and Visit South Bend, Mishawaka, offices at one oh one North Michigan Street in downtown South Bend. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to speak, um, to advocate, uh, uh, for, for SB one sixty-four. Um, I think this is, there's a real opportunity here for Saint Joseph County to sort of level the playing field. Um, as the, uh, the, the resolution stipulates or states, uh, we are, uh, not at the same level as, uh, peer cities, if you will, within the state, specifically Fort Wayne and Evansville, um, and then even some cities, uh, smaller than, than South Bend. So, um, this has been a, a very deliberate process and intentional process to try and, um, uh, identify, uh, ways to improve the product that we have, the tourism product in Saint Joseph County, um, with this, um, increase. So, um, as Jeff mentioned, the sports complex, um, the, the zoo, uh, the Morris Performing Arts Center, and I think perhaps most exciting and and possibly transformational in addition to the sports complexes, uh, the Tourism Capital Improvement Fund. Uh, this is gonna be an ongoing effort, um, application-based, um, and, uh, leveraged, uh, funds, so, uh, meant to be matched. So, any funds that would be, uh, deposited into this account would be then hopefully, um, doubled, if not, uh, tripled, um, with, uh, the level of investment that would take place in, in the tourism product in Saint Joseph County. And I think as I've, as I've mentioned to you before, um, a couple of reasons that this has just never been more imperative. One, uh, this is a, an industry that has really struggled with the pandemic, so this is a way to identify ways to bring more visitors and guests to, to Saint Joseph County to fill these hotel rooms. Uh, but also, uh, you know, the facts are, we have five thousand and thirty-two hotel rooms in Saint Joseph County. We have three hundred and ninety-one under construction, including the largest, and we really have to identify ways to, to fill these rooms uh, beyond the six football weekends of the year, and we think that this bill will go a long way in, in helping us do that. Um, and again, as Jeff said, we, we fully recognize that, um, if we're successful in Indianapolis, um, and we think your, your supporting resolution would help us be successful, and if we're successful, we'll be back, uh, before you because it will be up to, to the county council to, um, actually enable this legislation. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of bill number thirty-four twenty-one, resolution bill thirty-four twenty-one?
Sheriff McBride has her hand up.
She's unmuted.
Thank you. This is Sheriff McBride, Vice President of the City Council, would like to speak in support of this resolution. It did pass through the city council with a nine-zero vote, so I just wanted to express our support of this bill.
Thank you, thank you very much, Councilwoman. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this bill?
I see, I see the other hands.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing, hearing none, I will close the public hearing on resolution bill number thirty-four twenty-one. May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion for passage?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill, resolution bill number thirty-four twenty-one was made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilman Kanericki. Any further comments from any council member on resolution bill thirty-four twenty-one?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzright?
Just want to state my, my support for the bill, um, is because of the fact that the bill, if it is enacted by this council and if, and if the state legislature passes enabling legislation, um, and if this becomes before us, I mean, my support for this bill would be the fact, as Rob DeKleen has mentioned and Jeff Ray leveled our playing field, it would give us more opportunities to provide for bringing people here for tourism and, um, generally, generally speaking, most of the tax paid by people at state hotels, um, generally speaking, are not paid by local residents, usually paid for out of, by out-of-town guests, so that's, that's why I'm lending my support toward this resolution, and hopefully it'll pass the state legislature and come back to us for consideration at later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from any council member at this time? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File? Mr. File?
He's muted, he's muted.
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tulloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Let the record show that resolution bill number thirty-four twenty-one was passed by a unanimous vote of nine to zero. Next, we have, uh, salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read bill number twenty-four twenty-one?
Bill twenty-one, in ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Sancho County for the year twenty-twenty-one. Petitioner, auditor.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Um, Mr. President, bill number twenty-four twenty-one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yeah, so as explained a couple of weeks ago, Patty Henry, our, our real estate clerk, has been moving into the payroll position. When she moves from a, an ex- a non-exempt position to exempt, uh, we have to pay out their comp time. Her comp time comes to three thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. So, for the, for twenty-twenty-one, her salary will be three thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars more than her forty-five thousand dollar salary. This is not a salary increase.
Three thousand, you can agree.
Nope, dear, go back, it'll be forty-five thousand.
Thank you. Any questions from council, from Mr. Hammond? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number twenty-four twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill number twenty-four twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass bill number twenty-four twenty-one was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Kanericki. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tulloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number twenty-four twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one, in ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Sancho County for the year twenty-twenty-one, petitioner auditor.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, uh, bill number twenty twenty-one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
As you guys know, the federal government treasury is, is, uh, giving Sancho County eight-point-one million dollars with which to provide emergency rental assistance to our local uh, so, ten percent of that can be spent monthly on administration, so we're using sixty thousand dollars of that to pay for, uh, specific, specifically for Corey Shipka to be the administrator of the Emergency Relief Act money. Uh, this is a one-year deal, and then after this, she will be going back to be the grant administrator.
Thank you. Any questions from any council member for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll op- hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number twenty twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on bill twenty twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
This could be holy cross call.
Move for passage?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number twenty twenty-one was made by Councilman Kanericki. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any, any council member on bill twenty twenty-one? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Uh, Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tulloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Kenaracki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
March three nine zero. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number twenty twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number twenty-three twenty-one?
In ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six seventy, seventy-six twenty, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Sancho County for the year twenty-twenty-one, petitioner commissioners.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Uh, Mr. President, bill number twenty-three twenty-one comes to the full council with, without recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
President Morton, esteemed members of council, this is Andy Castelni, President of the Sancho County Board of Commissioners, with offices on the seventh floor of the county city building. Um, I'm here before you tonight asking to increase the number of deputy county attorneys by one. Um, we had a situation with the Health Department where David Keckley, their longtime attorney, retired at the end of two thousand and twenty. So, we decided to, that it made more sense to hire another deputy county attorney out of the commissioner budget. This way, the Health Department could, could keep that funding for, and, and use it for better purposes. Then this would allow the Board of Commissioners and, and the county itself to have a little bit more capacity. This new deputy county attorney's role will be primarily with the Health Department. Um, but as we've seen litigation increase from the Health Department standpoint, we thought it also that it might make more sense to have someone who was a bit more, um, suited to handle some of these things. And it also made sense that we might have some additional capacity as needed for the county. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council for Commissioner Castelni? Hearing none, we will open a public hearing on bill twenty-three twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill number twenty-three twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion to pass bill number twenty-three twenty-one was made by Councilman Kanericki, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on bill twenty-three twenty-one? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tulloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number twenty-three twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number nineteen twenty-one?
Nineteen twenty-one, in ordinance, amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being, uh, in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Sancho County for the year twenty-twenty-one, petitioner Health.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. Morton, this comes to the council without a recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening. Amy Rupe, Administrator for the Department of Health, with offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. Before you is a request to appropriate funds with a grant that we had received from the Indiana Department of Health. At the committee meeting, I had made a comment that I was going to change the appropriation as it was presented at the committee meeting. However, after speaking with Bob, our health officer, we are going to leave it as it was originally submitted at the council meeting, um, with temporary seasonal help having one physician, including FICA, and then the rest as COVID expenditures.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, I'll open a public hearing on bill number nineteen twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of this bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill nineteen twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Move for passage?
Do I hear a second?
Second. Second.
A motion to pass bill number nineteen twenty-one was made by Councilman Kanericki. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on bill nineteen twenty-one? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Tulloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kaneracki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number nineteen twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number twenty-one twenty-one?
Twenty-one twenty-one, in ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Sancho County for the year twenty-twenty-one, petitioner Health Department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Hi, yes. Um, we are receiving a $20,000 grant from the Institute for Intergovernmental Research to standardize overdose fatality review data collection in our county.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, I apologize. Amy Rupee, Administrator for the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building.
Thank you very much. Any council member have any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on Bill number 2121. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of Bill 2121? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on the bill. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to pass.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Um, there was a motion to pass Bill number 2121 made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member in regards to Bill 2121? Hearing none. Clerk Lee, please take the roll.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 2121 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 2221.
2221. An ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Sancho County for the year 2021, petitioner prosecutor.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Have him raise his hand. If the presenter needs to raise their hand.
The presenter needs to raise her hand? Mr. Eisenhofer or Mr. Carter?
I don't see them.
Just phone number.
Oh.
Uh, what's, what's the, um?
Mr. Morton, I make a motion to send the Bill 2221 back to committee.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Krasinski to send Bill number 2221 back to committee. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill number 2221 goes back to committee. Next on the agenda, public hearing, public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our February 23rd, 2021 committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 1821?
1821. An ordinance appropriating transferring monies for the purposes herein specified for the several departments here in this Sancho County government.
May I have a motion on Bill number 1821?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass. Bill number 1821 was made by Councilman Nolan, and it was seconded by Councilman Cantor Ricky. Any further comments from any council member in regards to Bill number 1821? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Uh, Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 1821 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next under land use planning. Clerk, will you please read Bill number five dash 21?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Uses, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code is amended for property located at 12555 Adams Road, the C Commercial District to B Business District, petitioner 12555 State Road 23 LLC.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number five dash 21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Area plan?
Uh, good evening. This is Ryan Fellows with Area Plan Commission with offices on the 11th floor of the county city building. I understand we're not having video or, uh, PowerPoint tonight, so this is material that we covered well during the county, uh, committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, this is for the property that, uh,
Ryan?
Yes.
Um, yeah, you are being allowed to share your screen.
Okay, very good. I will do that. Okay. Thank you. All right. So this is for, uh, property located at 15, I'm sorry, 12555 Adams Road, State Route 23. This is near the kind of downtown of Granger, if you will. This property is currently zoned C Commercial District, but it's site plan specific to just be the veterinary clinic. It is surrounded by property that is zoned to B Business District.
Sorry, Ryan.
That's okay. Uh, can you still see my shared screen?
No.
No.
Okay. Let me try again here. Okay. Uh, you see the site plan, which is just the current configuration. Uh, this comes through the favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission. There was no one that spoke in opposition, uh, to this proposal, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the petitioner is available as well.
Any questions from counsel for area plan? Thank you. Petitioner?
Uh, Terry Lang from Lang Feeney and Associates, address 715 South Michigan Street in South Bend, represent the petitioner here. Uh, Ryan's pretty much summed up the, just to my presentation there, it's the former brighter building, and it's being rezoned for business use. Uh, they are building a new facility, uh, southwest of the Granger area, and we would appreciate approval by the council.
Thank you. Any questions from any council member for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on Bill number five 21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing on our close the public hearing on Bill number five 21. May I have a motion?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number five 21 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on Bill five 21? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number five dash 21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please? Thank you. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number six dash 21?
Six 21. An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Uses, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code is amended for property located at 10386 McKinley Highway from C Commercial District, site plan specific, to C Commercial District, not site plan specific, petitioner Wood Rental Properties LLC.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number six dash 21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Area plan?
Hey, Ryan Fellows again. Um, this is, uh, property that is currently being used for self-storage units. Uh, the one, uh, as you see, the property is surrounded by our single-family district on, uh, pretty much all sides. The, we did have one person show up for the public hearing who spoke about, uh, how close the buildings were to of the western edge. Um, that is something that was been noted by planning staff, and it's been shared with the building department. So when they do go to apply for building permit, um, it will be carefully observed to make sure they maintain the 20-foot of separation that they should have between a, our single-family district versus the C Commercial District. The property is, uh, this, uh, has a picture of, from McKinley. Uh, you see this kind of, uh, in the center there, there's some building material staged right there with the intention that a property would be built with a new storage unit in the front of the property. Um, the petitioner is here and able to answer questions, as am I, and this comes through the favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel for area plan? Petitioner?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
I.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Uh, this is Stephanie from Progressive Engineering. I represent the petitioner for this site. Um, we are aware of all the, um, the 20-foot, uh, setback requirement, and actually, our crew was on-site today to tie down all the buildings. We have been in discussion with Ryan and the area plan members on this, so we will be updating the site plan to actually see if the GIS is representative of what you just saw on the screen here a little while ago, or if it's the original site plan that was submitted when they first built the, um, mini storage units, if that's more of how the property is actually laid out.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. Hearing none. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill number six dash 21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on Bill six dash 21. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Somebody has their hand up.
Oh, I'm, 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 okay.
Oh, okay.
Yep, sorry, I took it down.
Okay.
May I have a motion on the bill?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion to pass. Bill number six dash 21 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on Bill six 21? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
File? Mr. File?
Hi.
Thanks. Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Holmes, right?
Yes.
Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Coke carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number six dash 21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 16 dash 21?
1621. An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Uses, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code is amended for property located at 52694 State Road 933 from our single-family district to C Commercial District, petitioner DEV 52694 State Road 933 LLC.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please.
President, Bill number 16 dash 21 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Hey, Ryan Fellows again. As you see on the screen, this is an existing car wash facility. Um, the back portion of the property, uh, was zoned, our, is zoned our single-family at the moment, and a petitioner swishes to make the entire property whole, so they can use it to tear down this existing car wash to put up a new car wash in its place. And here you see the site plan, really, this is just going to be the driveway loop around. It's going to take part, take place in this back part of the property. They do have a full row of landscaping evergreens proposed as a a buffer as per our code book, and, um, this comes through the favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission. There was no one who spoke in opposition to this, and the petitioner is available, and I'm also available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel for area plan?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzright?
Mr. Fellows, you may not be prepared to answer this question. That may not be a matter of zoning. Uh, the county noise ordinance, for example, um, I, I, I know in the city of South Bend, their noise ordinance talks about what time loud noises can begin and end, and my question was, are there any provisions that this petitioner could be held to anything, um, like that regarding, um, noise that exceeds certain decibels or at certain times in the day? Because it, it does affect residential property, and the only thing that concerns me looking at the site plan is the dumpster locations right up against those residential properties. Um, I know from my own personal experience, I live next to B Business in the city of South Bend and across from C Commercial, that the operators, the waste companies that want to empty those dumpsters like to do it like at four and five in the morning. It's very inconvenient to the residents that live next to that. So I'm, I'm not certain what our noise ordinance allows, but, um, I have to, I have to personally call those companies and explain to them that the city of South Bend's ordinance doesn't allow for any noises like that to occur except after 8:00 AM. And would you happen to know if the county's noise ordinance off the top of your head addresses anything like that, as far as when noise can be made?
I, I do not know that off the top of my head, um, but I will definitely look into it, and I'll be part of my review, uh, when it goes through commercial plan review, when they apply for building permit. And if there's anything that needs to be required of them, it will be noted at that time. But certainly, they do, are required to have a landscape buffer there, which they have, and they do have a dumpster enclosure shown on the site plan, and we'll definitely make sure that that's there. Uh, but that doesn't necessarily address your question about what times they, they work. Um, I will definitely look into that, though.
I'll, I'll probably have to look into it. I'll probably have to look into our ordinances to look at the noise ordinance specifically to see if that's covered. But if not, maybe that's another issue to take at a later date in time. But if we could encourage them to work with their vendor to not do that, I think the residents would probably appreciate that if this does get passed.
Yeah. Councilman Katanzright, this is Abby Wiles, Director of the Area Plan Commission. We'll certainly locate the noise ordinance and review it. I don't know how it's written or who the enforcing authority is. If it is area plan commission staff, we are, we have the ability to enforce our zoning and subdivision ordinance. So just wanted to make that.
You're probably not the right agency to enforce that. I just know we have a noise ordinance on the books and it might even be the county police that enforces that.
In regards to your specific question about hours of operation, that is something that the council could assign a commitment for, restricting hours. That's my understanding.
Okay. As part of this rezoning request, correct?
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions for area plan?
President Morton?
Mr. Krasinski?
I have a question for either Ryan or Abby. Their current location has a car wash on it now with lighting. Abby or Ryan, can the lighting also be addressed with the new vendor that is going to build there? I would think that the lighting would be improved. But can the lighting issue also be addressed based on Mr. Katanzright's comment with that one residential house there to the, to the east?
Yeah, the lighting will definitely be part of the commercial plan review. It will have to follow the stipulations in the zoning code. And that I can assure you does have certain heights where it has certain percent where the light has to be directed downward. It's commonly called like a shoebox style, depending on what height you get to. But that will definitely be part of plan review. And we will ensure that they are compliant with their code. We actually discussed lighting not that long ago at a different site on McKinley Avenue where we had a slide included for light. But we're confident we'll be able to enforce that.
Thank you, Ryan.
Any other questions from counsel for area plan?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzright?
Just, just to pass it along to Abby and to Ryan. Looking at this particular petitioner at one of their other locations in a much more highly commercialized area, there, there are hours of operation Monday through Saturday. The car wash itself opens up at 7:30 in the morning. So I don't know if that would conflict with any noise ordinances that we might have. Because they do generate some noise, I know, with, with the car washing operation. So that might be something you guys might want to look at when it comes to final site plan approval process. Because I don't know if this location intends to have the same hours of operation. Maybe not because it's commercial abutting residential in the, in the, the location I'm referring to on North Main Street. It's commercial abutting, I believe, commercial or, or maybe mixed use. But it's, you know, the, the commercial quarter is not quite the same. I mean, it's highly commercialized, don't get me wrong, on 933. But it also abuts residential to the east, like Mr. Krasinski said. So just their hours of operations might conflict with the name we have in the books in terms of noise ordinance. Again, I don't know without having that ordinance in front of me.
We will take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Council President. Just wanted to clarify, though, that if, once this goes through the site plan review, when the rezoning is in place, hours, we're not able to regulate hours of operation.
Mr. Morton?
Yes. Mr. Katanzright?
I would defer to the county councilman of that district. I mean, I mean, it's not my district, but I just wonder if anybody else has any concerns about that? If the car wash opens at 7:30, like their other locations, is that going to be an issue, they think, for the residents that abut that property? You know, if they, if they start at 7:30, do they get there and actually open, open up the building and begin generating noise at 7:00, 7:15? Just a thought. I guess I would defer to the district councilman if they want to maybe address that. But I just hate to see a problem occur and if we approve it, about it being addressed.
Mr. Katanzright, I appreciate your comment and your, and your concern to me. Based on the area that this car wash is going to be located and with the noise factor, with the other businesses that are up there, I don't see that being that big of a deal. Like I said, based on the businesses that are there. On Sundays, I know this, the particular car wash opens at 8:30. And I believe they stay open till eight o'clock at night. And that's Monday through Sunday, I believe. They may close earlier on Sunday night. But I, I, I don't have a concern with the noise issue.
Okay.
The car wash now?
That is correct.
The new one certainly.
It's a car wash now, correct?
Correct. Will certainly be quieter than the existing one. And absolutely, the lighting will be better. I think it's created as eight to seven hours of the car wash.
Hi there, this is Abby with area plan again. I do see Mike Dance on, and I believe he is representing the petitioner on this. And would, I guess, since hours were not disclosed in the application, ask him to clarify for his client.
Yes, I am here.
Any other questions, area plan? If not, we'll move on to the petitioner.
Thank you. Mike Dance from Dance, Harner and Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioner. And as Abby had mentioned, yes, the, the hours would be about the same. What is happening here is, is that the existing shillings facility, which is an old facility, and it, it has the old equipment to it. It will be completely razed. A brand-new facility will go in. Well, certainly, there is an ordinance for the county that has decibel readings. And I believe it also has hours for those decibels. And we would be below those. Usually, in a car wash, the, the only real noise factor would be the, the dryers. And in this particular case, those dryers are at the very far end, the west end of the building, which is away from the residential area. So from a noise standpoint, that noise would not be toward that residential area. I just wanted to make that clear. We'll definitely take a look at the location for where the dumpster site is. And we'll work with the staff on that to place it as far away from that residential home as possible. Right now, that property has basically all the storage right there up against that residential area. What we are doing here in this particular case is, is we're actually bringing this site up to complete standards for the county. It doesn't have that right now. For whatever reason, the back portion of this property was never zoned properly. And I don't believe anybody actually even knew that situation existed. We had talked with the staff. And so this particular site plan addresses all the latest county standards for the buffering that's required and also the distances away from the residential area. And from a drainage standpoint, this is also going to be brought up to the latest standards. Right now, the minimal for the drainage, we'll be bringing it up to the 5.6-inch rainfall. As far as access to the site, that is not changing. The two driveway openings that exist out there right now on 933 will remain the same. This will be the latest technology for a car wash facility. Drive and Shine is basically redoing their facilities and bringing them up to the current standards for technology. And in this particular case, they're probably going to expend in excess of $5 million to redo this entire site. And we'll definitely work with the staff on all the issues the council had brought up. If you've got any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing now, we'll open a public hearing on bill number 1621. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing on bill number 1621. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Say again.
Motion to pass bill number 1621 was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilman Kennerackey. Any further comments from any council member on bill number 1621? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kennerackey?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 16-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have bill number 1721 under miscellaneous. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
Norance of the San Jose County Council for providing a COVID-19 hazard pay stipend to 2020 general election workers, petitioners, Diane Hess and Joe Kennerackey.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Bill number 17-21 needs to be amended.
Mr. President, I'd move to amend bill 1721 to include the language that we will be providing the hazard pay stipend at option A, which is a $25 per day level, covering 940 election workers.
Thank you. May I have a motion? There's a motion to amend bill number 1721 as read. Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to amend bill number 17-21 as read. The proposed amendment now becomes part of the public hearing on the bill. Petitioner?
Yes, um, this is an ordinance seeking to provide a hazard pay stipend to the election workers who were not included in some of the initial hazard pay conversation, considering that they were not yet employed in the roles that they took. This would cover the election workers for, for both the elections. And we, you know, when Diane and I were putting time into this and considering this, a big, a big piece of it was basically that a lot of these people that took these roles were unaware of the hazards that they were going to encounter, even when they took them during the pandemic. I think we saw a spike in fall. And we saw certainly historic levels of turnout and sort of quilt work of different levels of mask mandate enforcement at the various different polling places. So we considered this an important thing to do for those folks that came out and did their civic duty.
Any questions?
I have a question, I have a question on this amendment.
Mr. File?
Is this amendment more expensive to the taxpayers than the original proposal or less?
As, as provided in the materials in the bill, option A is the least expensive of the three proposals that we've discussed.
Well, what's the difference in cost?
$5 per day from option B, as, as you'd read in the material, and an additional $5 from option C.
So it comes out in total the same?
No, it's, it's $5 less per election worker for option B and $5 less a per worker from option C.
Mr. File? The total amount, if we use the $25 per day option, is, if I can read it now, is $76,537.50. Option B would be $91,845. And option C was $107,152 total. So option A was the most cost-effective and still provides them with. Does that answer your question?
I think what you're saying is it's several thousand dollars less than the original proposal.
The original, the original proposal, we didn't, we didn't really discuss, I don't think, the financial portion of it at the committee meeting. So there was, information was distributed that provided three different options. Option A for $25 per day, option B at $30 per day, and option C for $35 per day. And that's per day that that particular election worker worked. So, but option A puts it in line with hazard pay that other workers received. And again, the total expense for, to cover all 940 workers is $76,537.50.
Any other questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing now, I'll open a public hearing on bill number 1721. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing on bill number 17-21. Amendment to bill number 1721 has been moved and seconded. All in favor of the proposed amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill number 17-21 is amended. May I have a motion on bill 1721 as amended?
Move for passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
A motion to pass bill number 17-21 as amended was made by Councilwoman Hess and seconded by Councilman Kennerackey and a third by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments? Any further comments from any council member in regards to bill number 1721 as amended? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kennerackey?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 17-21 as amended was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes public hearing for this evening. Next is unfinished business. Next is new business. Next is a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Well done on the new program, ladies. That's work.
I know it. I know it. Awesome, awesome job.